Call council meeting to order. We're in the council meeting for April 5th, 2022. Marshall's gonna be a little bit late here for the council's information. Is there any additions to the agenda? Apparently no additions. Any citizens comments? No citizens comments. We got a representative for GBT presentation?
No.
Nope.
I took that off from last time.
Huh?
That was last time.
Last meeting.
Oh. You didn't take that off? Consent agenda approved minutes in the last council meeting.
So, second.
You got a motion and a second on the table, all in favor? All opposed. This is four and oh. Any motion on appropriation of order, ordinance? Four or five of 2022, $185,000, $120.27. Petty cash is $389.
Some moved.
You got a motion and a second on the table, any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed. This is four and oh. Moving right along, department head, committee, electric department, Jeff Williamson. He's not here.
He didn't have anything?
He didn't have anything. Water department, Jason White.
Well, we can start with Vincent from Key Equipment. And if you guys wouldn't mind hearing him out, and then we can let him go on down the road. Starting that area. So, Jason asked me to come over and talk to you guys a little bit about the condition of your guys' sewer truck. Uh, I did just a simple walk around, just to see what all we can find. Uh, what is wrong and some concerns that he did have. And, uh, that's kind of some of the, the deal, oh, sorry. Some of the stuff we came up with, well, I came up with. But, uh, in addition to your guys' pony motor going bad on your vacuum, uh, these are a few things that we would probably need to address if you guys plan on keeping that machine. Uh, cause in the condition it's in right now, it is a, uh, a hazard to your employees and public safety. Uh, several hydraulic lines, uh, there's several leaks on it. A lot of your hydraulic lines have cracks in the lines. I mean, we are talking about a 38-year-old machine. Uh, your boom suction tube, uh, it's rusted almost completely through. Uh, your debris body has rust spot, or some rust spots and a few soft spots. And then, uh, your rear door seal needs to be replaced. But on top of that, one of the biggest concerns for him and some of your employees is it's a manual latch, so you've got five latches you have to undo in order to dump out the debris body. So you're talking about raw sewage getting on your employees. And two of the latches are almost nine foot tall. So, how are you gonna get to that without a ladder? And then you're right in the way of everything else. Uh, on the last page, uh, I just printed off the first, uh, little bit of some of the diseases that do carry in the sewer system. So, that's just something to keep in mind. Uh, your air tank for your truck, uh, has several rust spots. Uh, and that's part of your brake system for the truck. So that is definitely something we need to probably address. Uh, your rubber suction hose, uh, it has several wear spots and I can stick my finger through on one of them. Uh, your chain sprocket on your front hose drill that runs your hose in and out of the sewer lines or storm lines, uh, it definitely, it needs to be replaced. Uh, there's too much slack and there's no more adjustment left on it. And then the sprockets themselves are worn pretty hard to where they got sharp teeth on them. So that's a, a good sign of age and wear. There's a rear axle seal leaking on the driver's side and so, and then of course you guys already know about the, the pony motor. That's the engine for the hydraulics and the suction. Uh, you guys apparently have it in a machine shop, getting an estimate is what I'm kind of guessing or hearing. But, uh, these are just some concerns, uh, that he has, uh, and you guys should have too. Uh, but it is a 1984, so the Detroit that's in there is something to consider that you're gonna be, if it breaks down, you may or may not be able to find parts for it anymore. Uh, so it's just something to think about. Uh, I know, uh, he's talked to you guys in the past about, uh, a new truck. And then he's also talked to you guys about a couple of used trucks where he has mentioned it. Uh, but I really hate to see you guys start dumping, you know, 40, 50 grand into something that is still a 1984 model that's still not gonna be worth much. You guys have any questions for me?
I think it's got an International DT 466.
What's that?
I think it's got a DT 466.
Yes.
It's not a Detroit.
It's not, say that again?
It's not a Detroit.
It's not a Detroit in that one? Okay, then that's my bad. I wasn't able to pop the hood because I couldn't move the, the hose drill out due to the rear engine being taken off. But I did attach a few pictures of just some of the stuff that I, I noticed without having to crawl up or underneath. So I didn't crawl underneath and check for any major leaks or anything. But you're still talking about a system, you've still got a whole hydraulic system underneath the truck too that, who knows the conditions? There's no way for me to test it without having the motor, uh, back on there. But apparently you guys were having problems with the head gasket or overheating or something. Uh, I think, uh, Murphy said it had a crackhead or something and he couldn't find a cylinder head for it. So I don't know if they're gonna try and repair the cylinder head, I don't.
They took it in, they just took it in and they're gonna let us know what they could do.
Okay.
And that's all, that's as far as it went so far.
Okay.
That's why I wanted to get you in here, see what they did, you know, see what we could get done. And then if it's looked like we can't find it, this is, it'd be perfect time for you to come in and, and then just domino down and see what happens. As far as the size of the town and like a back trailer, is that something that's?
So, a back trailer would.
Is that something you sell or?
You're, you're still gonna be right around a hundred thousand dollars for a back trailer. Uh, I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying, I mean, that's, that's gonna be a ballpark depending on options and, you know, stuff like that. But if you can find a used one, good luck, because contractors, soon as one comes on the market, it's gone. They, they pick them up pretty quick. We, we try to stock some used equipment, because we sell used equipment too. And we'll refurbish them and then resell them. But as of right now, I was gonna bring some options for like a used Vector, you know, a sewer truck. But right now I have nothing. Everything is, all our used equipment is sold. Uh, I don't have anything to offer but a new truck. And we also have a demo truck. Uh, but that's the only two things I have right now that would even fit your needs. But the, if you guys decide to go new, one thing to think about is it's not only a sewer truck, it is also a hydro excavator. So when you guys are going out on a job or, you know, any more utilities are buried underlying, you'll save money by being able to hydro excavate, because you're not waiting one to two hours for the person to come out and do the locates where you can start digging with your backup or something. You can start digging right away with a hydro excavator. And plus it's safer and you're not gonna cut stuff with it. There's, the chance of damaging anything underground while you're hydro excavating is pretty minimal. But, uh, it's also, you know, it has a power wash down gun. So if you had to say wash a building or something, you know, I don't know, I'm just throwing stuff out there. But you're also looking at taking care of your sewer system. And then it will also help anywhere else you guys need it. If you guys needed it to say help suck out a pool or something to fix a problem, that's a truck that could do that. Uh, the older truck, it's not really designed for a hydro excavation setup. And you can put one on there, but it's not safe. And to be honest with you, that's what it has now. Someone has installed a kit that shouldn't probably be on there or be used because there's no safety in line with it. There's no relief valves or anything. So if something were to go wrong, whoever's holding that gun could potentially be harmed. And we're talking 2,000 plus PSI of water. And that's kind of the same thing on your hydraulics. A lot of your hydraulics are gonna be anywhere from 2,000 to 4,000 PSI, depending what part of the system that's running. And if you are walking by within a 10-foot range, 200-plus degree hydraulic oil hits you, it's not gonna be fun. And the same thing for these guys, they're working with it, right on it, right by it, day in and day out. It's, in my opinion, almost every hydraulic line on that truck probably needs to be replaced, just by looking at it. I just took pictures of the worst ones, but you can go up to them and literally put a little flex on them and you can see the, the stress cracks in it. So, I mean, to me, that's not safe. I was a mechanic for this company for nine years. And just looking at some of the stuff on that truck, it gives me anxiety looking at it, so. But if you guys haven't seen the truck up close, I would highly suggest maybe get with him and just do a walk around and see what you guys are actually dealing with.
What do new trucks run?
I'm sorry?
What do new trucks run, how much?
Uh, so, just being prepared, uh, I do have, so I have two of them quoted in here, they're the exact same truck. I guess one's a newer model, one year newer. Need two more? Oh, you already got one, okay, I'm sorry. There you go. So, uh, we do have a demo Vector that's a 2021. They do come with one-year warranty, uh, parts and labor. Uh, we also cover the water tanks for 10 years. We'll also cover the debris body for five years. And we also cover the water pump for two years. So everything on the rest of the truck has a one-year warranty. And we'll do that on the demo truck also.
Your other used one sold, didn't it?
What's that?
Your other used truck sold, didn't it?
Yeah, that other used truck did sell, correct. So we also rent equipment too. So I would throw this out there, just so you guys know what the actual cost to rent one of these trucks and it's weekly, monthly. Need one more? There you go. And so that's what you would be looking at if you wanted to rent a truck from us. It's not as small of a truck that is quoted to you there. It's a little bit bigger truck, it'd be about the same size, maybe a little bit bigger than what you guys would have if you were to rent one. The truck I have quoted out is a little bit smaller than that, so you can get in and out of alleyways, uh, smaller footprint. But we do rent those, uh, we do quite a bit of rentals actually. Uh, but usually it's the contractors or somebody that has a machine that's down and that's how we help them out.
The closest location to us is Kansas City.
So I'm at a great bin, a road service mechanic, but the closest location is Kansas City, correct? I believe our road service mechanic, he's been over here several times to help out on your current truck and I believe your street sweeper also.
Does your road service mechanic, does that, does he, would he repair some of these problems on our old truck? Or is that?
If you wanted him to.
Just, just curious.
I mean, if you really want to get down nitty gritty on price, on what it would cost to fix everything on it, we can have him come over and do a full-on evaluation, write up every single thing on it. And then he'll give it to the parts department, they'll send him back a quote. And then, uh, his boss will come up with roughly what it would be at per hour to have him come over and work on it. But he would do it here if possible. Uh, the boom might be the problem. Uh, if there was a way you guys had help for him to get the boom on and off to repair it in some way, that might be the, the biggest thing. And, and, uh, that boom right there, I can tell you the lead time would probably be pretty high on getting parts for it just because Vector no longer makes that style of truck anymore. That boom is out of date by probably 20-plus years. So getting the cylinder repaired, because it does have a leak when you're booming it in and out, it's pouring out. Uh, and then of course, your inner boom tube, over time you get sand and dirt, just normal wear and tear. And then of course, the outer part is now showing pretty good wear too, so.
I'm just trying to look at options for us. I, for me, a new, new truck is maybe out of our price range for the size of, size of us. But, um, just trying to throw some numbers together that might be a for us.
Well, uh, so we go through, we get, we do financing a lot for cities through US Bank. And, uh, they offer some of the lowest rates. But I had him just throw together, what a seven-year term and stuff would be. So you guys had an idea, I just had him round the numbers. Uh, so, oh, so you guys had a, a good idea of what we're looking at or what you guys would be looking at per year, if you were to go that route?
You get it one of these times?
And so, uh, that's just an idea. And that there is actually at the rear of the payment. So the first payment wouldn't be due for the first year. So your first payment wouldn't be due till next year at this time, say you bought it today. So, I mean, that would give time to, to budget if you needed to.
How big are tanks on that truck?
Uh, on that one there, that is a 500-gallon tank and that's got a three-yard debris body. Where your current truck is probably closer to 800, I believe. And, uh, it's gonna have a little bit bigger debris body, I believe that one there is around seven. I don't know if you need any of this or, uh, combinator. I got a couple coffees left there. But, uh, it's just something, he's expressed concerns and, uh, I think he was kind of tired of being the middle man there. And so he asked me if I would come over, that way if you guys had any questions or concerns. And then, uh, I could answer those for you. Or if you guys would like to see that truck, I could definitely get it over here and let you look at it.
Jason, what are your thoughts on this? I think I already know, but. I just don't wanna see, I don't wanna see it, any more money sunk into a sinking ship. That's all I'm saying. And I just got a feeling after it's all said and done, it's still just gonna be a sinking ship. And the main, my main concern too on that is it's so tall, I'm not sure, I'm not tall. And every time I gotta dump that tank, I wear a bath of sewage and I'm, I'm, I just, it just eats on me after a while, just having to work.
Right.
And that's why nobody likes running that truck. And since I'm the superintendent, it's gotta be done, so I guess I'm wearing it. And it just gets old.
One thing I'll add about that truck is it is actually under the weight requirements to require a CDL. So if somebody new came on and they had a CDL, that is something they could actually operate without being in trouble.
This one right here?
Yes. Now, your bigger truck out there, it does require a CDL.
So moving forward, can they kind of like digest this information? And if, if they have any questions they can get with me and Jason and we can forward those on and?
Absolutely.
They just got the information tonight.
One thing I always tell people, if it's something you guys are thinking about going ahead and doing, I always tell them, take my numbers that I got from our bank and take them to your local bank and see if they can beat them.
Right.
That way you're keeping your money local.
Yeah. Definitely just a lot of information for you guys to make a decision tonight, so.
Absolutely.
If you guys wanna digest that, and then if you guys have any questions, we can just get an email together and, and get him an email and, and some answers back by next council meeting, if you'd like that.
So I do have the demo truck in stock. The other truck that is coming in that's identical is obviously a little bit more because of price increases on stuff. But it's coming in, I believe in, uh, June or July, so.
And you're saying not very often do you see used back trucks? Is that what?
So we do get used back trucks, don't get me wrong. Uh, I've sent him a couple of them. Uh, I think the lowest one I was able to find him was around the 125 range. Now, just something to keep in mind on a, going through, just because we go through it, we're still, I mean, there's no warranty implied, it's a work-ready truck. But it's all the safety, anything that needs to be addressed, we address, we take care of it. That way it's a work-ready truck. But I can tell you what the, the way the equipment's going right now. The last one I found was a 2014. It was a little bit bigger truck than that, it was still a single axle truck, but we were still $224,000. And so, I mean, for that money, you're looking at an investment for the city. You know, that they're gonna be here for a long time. Versus you could buy a 10-year-old truck and it may last who knows how long. It just depends on how good the previous owner took care of it. A lot of times we either take them on trade or we'll buy them at an auction site, but then we bring them into our shop. And it's kind of like John Deere, you know, they take something on trade, they'll do a refurbish program on them. It's kind of the same thing that we do with sewer trucks and sweepers. So, we go through them, refurbish them. Anything that needs to be replaced, we check out the hydraulics. Usually we're replacing all the hydraulic lines. And then we'll put new hoses and everything on it, make it safe to operate. So, I mean, if that's something you guys would rather go, us finding a truck, you know, it could be six months down the road before I could actually get you a truck. But it'd be a matter of getting it into the shop and then getting everything to fix it and everything. So, uh, could be faster, it could be slower, just depends on the condition of the truck that we find. So.
I would, I would suggest that council, being in the vacuum truck business, I would suggest council would get on truck paper and look around for super back trucks, because I think you can find some pretty nice trucks on truck paper. If that's what you're thinking. And they're gonna, they're not gonna be 21s probably, and you can find new ones. But there's a lot of them out there, a terrible amount.
The biggest thing I'll tell you, if you're gonna go that route, just make sure you get one that's from cold states. Not Florida, not Texas, reason-wise, because it's not gonna have a winterization kit on it. So if you leave it parked outside, you could be in a situation where your pump's gonna break or your water lines are gonna get busted, you know, vice versa. It's not gonna be able to be used in cold weather. I mean, we don't get a lot of it anymore, but we do get it. And so when you guys, if you guys decide to go that route, that would be something I'd keep in the back of your head. Make sure it has some type of winterization kit, whether it be air purge or a way to drain the complete water system all the way down.
It's just, I just throw it out there for food for thought, don't get it.
And if you're gonna go that route, or like I said, our road service guy, we work on Vactors. That's who we represent. Uh, there's several other brands out there, but their closest road guy is in Kansas City or a little bit further into Missouri.
I appreciate you coming.
All right. You guys have a good night.
You guys have any questions before we leave?
What's that?
Ask him if any questions before we leave.
All right.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
We need more discussion on a back truck. I think I just throw it on the table, if we look the pictures, I'd say that that truck, that truck is probably pretty unsafe. Looking at the picture.
It's not been maintained?
Well, I did find out the great thing, they, I seen them up at the conference and they sat there and said, "Well, we used it, we, we wore it out before we even sold it to Ellen Glenn." I didn't even know they had it. And I was just like, okay, well, that explains something, so.
I think the council maybe ought to talk to Jason and tell him to look around on the internet, because I know there's a whole lot of back trucks on that, in the internet, super back trucks. The man on there that's less than a hundred thousand dollars.
I did appreciate you guys watching, because I kept on being the middle man here. And I was just like, all right, you've just gotta come in and talk to them. Quit passing the buck to me and then me passing on it. So that was, I appreciate that too. Now he's done it and we're good to go on down the road with that. Anyway, uh, I just wanna touch the base here with some EPA and that KDHE copper and lead. Well, we have a little problem here. EPA's passing it down about the split Michigan deal and we're paying the cost. We're gonna have to sit there and the way it looks, we're gonna have 10 to 15 years to start digging up every main, every service to the main and see if there's any lead, lead goosenecks. We've got to go into every home. And we've got to sit there and ask every person what kind of piping they have in their home. And if they have any metal, any galvanizing, anything like this from arc meter to the foundation and from the main to the meter, we've gotta get it replaced within 10 to 15 years. Every one of them. So I'm throwing that out there. I, I, I gotta tell you, this is what's gonna happen. It's gonna happen, there ain't no ifs, ands, or rounds or buts, it's gonna happen. And, uh, I'm gonna cut down on the, the streets real quick. I was telling a couple of you, there's, we're gonna have to get a lot of these done on the streets that we wanna seal. Because there's no sense of doing the ones that we're gonna do and then have to turn around and dig them all back up to get to our main. It's gonna have to happen. So I, we were, I was talking and doing some, Dave and I kind of narrowed it down to where we could do the square. That's all in that, that's, all those are pretty much in the alleys, we could at least get the square done this year and seal it. And then as far as going the others, as far as I had fourth, I had some others ready to do. I wanted to get done and start, but there's just no sense in it, because there's a lot of old homes up here that we're gonna have to dig up and, uh, get, uh, get to the main and lay new poly. They did guarantee that every city in Kansas, that's what they said, would get money for this, would help. They would help money. I, I referred to how are we gonna get it back? They said it's totally free money, it goes to U-Cities to get rid of your lead and, and lead goosenecks. Like I said, they're doing this for the safety of the people. So I just wanted to throw that out to you and I'm, I'm working on it as, we already got 115 of them done. And we're slowly getting there. Since I heard about this like a month and a half ago, we've been trying to get down this list. And they have a list, I put a list of, Pam gave me a 600 meters, whatever it is. And it's about 18 cells this long, that wide of everything. What's date was, I gotta go to the car, I gotta go find out what year the houses are. What year the plumbing got put in.
What year the plumbing got put in, what year was that line, that main put in. And I gotta do this, so it's gonna be a lot of desk work, a lot of going to courthouse, however, I gotta get this information. And I'm hoping a lot of the homeowners even know, cause that will save a lot of time.
How's the plumbing, like how does the courthouse know what?
No, 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 what year the house was built. That's what they need to know, because then it justifies from, if it's four, that way they'll know, say, hey, that house had some lead solder in it with their copper. That's what that, or you understand what I mean by that, I'm sure. All that's, all that's part of it.
Jason, you said from the foundation to the meter is what we're gonna need to know from everybody in town.
Mm-hmm, yup. And they also wanna know what's in the house. I don't know why, because they said that's gonna be a, too much of a can, can of worms to open right now. But they wanna know if it's in the house, cause I suppose that way with, when we have to change lead, lead, uh, sample places, sample sites, if they see a deal of, uh, copper in there, and well, you put on this piece of paper, this was, this house didn't have no lead copper fittings in it, so why are we still testing out there's a little bit of percentage of lead in there? And we've already replaced it. So anyway, they're probably, that's what they wanna know why. And so I, I am, I am trying to assume that's what they want it for. So it's gonna be a big deal. And I, trust me, there was a lot, that temperature in that room was rising pretty quick.
You can't sample certain areas of the city and figure out where lead's coming from?
That's what we've been trying to do all this time. We've been trying to do this, we have been doing this. But this is something EPA is low, coming down to KDHE and KDHE's coming down to every little city in Kansas to do this. Well, this is happening in two years. It will be a law in two years, they're letting us know earlier to get a jump on it, to get going. That's what they sat there and told me in McPherson and that, they told me in Wichita, and that's why they're having this, that's why they said. So I'm just trying to get a jump on it and get going. And then we can start getting the worst ones done first, which is all the galvanizing, which there's quite a bit. My house has galvanizing from the main to the, to the foundation.
So in two years, we'll have ten years to get all?
Ten to fifteen to get it done.
Ten to fifteen years to get all this done.
But I'd soon like, let's get it started and get it going.
Alright.
So I'm just letting you know, that's, that's why I don't think we wanna jump to getting a bunch of street work done. And then we have to tear it up, cause I, if we find a couple, three or five or ten in, in the streets we've already done, we'll have to dig them up. And that's why I was just, I wanted you guys to know what's going on. But I wanted to go to this other class and get my ducks over, cause I spent about an hour, an hour and a half at the booth. And I nacked them the whole time, I wanted to know what, everything we needed to do. So they already got, they gave me a paperwork, I've already got a little sweet, sweet story going on to put our name on the list for that funding. And they said, you just make it short and sweet, sign your name to it, when do you think you're gonna get it done? So I sat there, just gonna make up a date, I'm gonna think we could try to get it done eight to ten years, I just put that date on there, I'm gonna mail it off.
Bobby needs to sign that?
So, nope.
To request funding?
Nope, I already asked. They said, are you, are you the one that licensed with it? And I said, yes, you sign it, good enough. All this is, is just to let our, the city of St. John would like to have money, money for the funding to go from the meter to the foundation. And if you guys would like paperwork, I will get it sent to you so you can read all of it.
Yeah, would you?
Mm-hmm, sure.
Thank you.
Main water lines, Jason. How much for that do we have?
I've cast iron pine. But they're not saying that mains, not yet. Even though they're leaded joints, they're not saying that, they're just saying that gooseneck's coming from there, off the main to the meter. Not replacing all the mains, at least not yet. I'm not pushing the issue either, so I didn't ask why. I said, it's all we get, so we, you're just wanting us to make sure where there's metal, cause usually where there's galvanizer, there's metal piping, there's a lead gooseneck coming out of that. And we have quite a few of those. I wanna start there and start spreading out. So Dave's going around each van digging them up, seeing what's on each side of that meter. At least we're starting that, at least we can get that going, because we have to have all of that paper filled out before we get any grant money at all. Or any just money. Free money, I would say.
I'm a little bit concerned about, you know, putting the street projects on halt for, for, for many years and then getting back even farther than what we're back for.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that's why I like to start on these ones and then while two or three of us are doing this, the other ones could start milling the street. Let's say we only have a couple blocks up here to do, we could sit there, at least get those done. And somebody can start milling behind that and at least get that much done. I'm not saying quit it, I'm just, I just, I don't, I want you guys to understand that I don't wanna just, I don't wanna go out and just do the whole bunch of street work and then have to turn around and start, then do the paperwork and, oh, no. We have four of them right over there we should've done and we just went over with a brand-new street. So I figured that's what we could do now, at least get, I wanna get Broadway, I wanna get some of, uh, uh, another couple streets done, at least we can go down those and get those done. And then, then, then we could sit there and start milling those. And then, cause if we have to dig up the street, I mean, heck, a part of it will be already tore up, so all we gotta do is just keep on milling on it and we'll go back, back with it. I still gonna buy the, I'll see if you guys let me get the asphalt and everything from the county and then we'll, cause it only takes one person, you know, to run that milling machine, the rest of us, so we could just go start digging up more stuff. And getting it ready. Cause I don't even know how much materials, it wants me to tell them how much the material's gonna cost, I have no idea until we get busy on that list. So that's the problem, I, I hope everybody's watching this, cause I'm, everybody's gonna have to tell me what they have in their house, so.
Good luck in that, I can't even get phone numbers.
Cause I have to, this has to be on that paper and they said if you, if it's all unknown, they're not gonna take it. You've got to at least try. And I said, I, they said they'd understand a little bit of it, but if you just put unknown on everything, that's saying you guys might even try it. And then, then they're gonna have fun, is what they said, so.
Wow.
So, anyway, I just wanted to let you know, what'd you guys think of the sewer bids? I got those for ya. The, the, one thing I will tell you real quick, if you guys, it's two separate bids that you wanted to get. And, uh, I got those, he sat there and said, if you guys wanna both done, at the same time, take off one of those $3,500 because they're already be here for the first job. And then let's do the second one. I told him I let him, I, I let you guys have a man whenever you guys wanna look over next, to the next couple, three meetings or whatever you'd like there, I told him that could happen. And then I'll just tell him what you guys thought after it's, after you go through it. I put no word, I put no word on Ivan from the KDHE, I did see my envelope in there, I did have that, I'll discuss that next meeting. And as far as the, uh, letter that was sent for, for the ammonia, that's pretty much just a, don't worry about it. Sign the paper, letting it know that there's gonna be an operator mowing and everything's gonna be done, because we can't, the city cannot afford to put another cell in. So we're kinda just grandfathering in there, so don't worry about that one, I just wanted to let you know what was going on. So that was a plus on that part.
So you're?
The ponds on the other one, I would like to invite the, that company to come in. Our T, our total suspended solids in our, uh, uh, biochemical oxygen demand is really high. The ponds aren't doing their job like they should, because there's a lot of silt, sludge in it. And these guys will come in and they have, they have no equipment, everything they do is biological. Don't have to drain them, don't have to do nothing, just let their stuff take care of it. And they do a free estimate, in-house estimate, nothing to our asses. They'll put it on the table and walk off, and if you like it, then I'll call them back. So I didn't figure, you know, what's it gonna hurt to get them out of here, see what it costs? Instead of having to, having to hire somebody to drain the ponds, which we haven't got, you know, we gotta get the valves fixed first. We haven't even got that done. So this way, those guys come in here, that'd be less cost, we have to worry. It's on, it's on his report that we gotta get it fixed, but we got a while for that yet. And I can't even, I can't even, I can't even get these passed right now, so, and next time when it fills up, I'm just gonna have to get sprinkled out on the ground until we get this done. So, if you guys are okay with them, I'll give them a call and tell them to put my, us on their list and then you can give us a free estimate about it. And other than that, I think that was the most important ones. If anything else you have questions, I'll let you know. And here's the short and sweet letter right there. Just gotta finish going out the dates.
Counselor said, more information thrown at him here pretty quick. I'd suggest you maybe table some of it and then give you time to look it over.
So Jason, on these mayor quotes?
Mm-hmm.
Seven thousand fifty-seven linear feet?
Yes.
That's kinda about what we talked about last, last meeting was. Except for that one west.
Except for this one right here that you guys wanted, separate.
Okay, okay, gotcha, yup.
And that was the short, shorter quote.
Yes.
And I know the rest of those were long, the bigger bid. But like you said, if you could take off the 3,500, if you, uh, you could take off the 3,500, if you guys wanna do that one along with these, because then they're already gonna be immobilized.
It does say on here, but I don't know how much it changed all, but quote expires in thirty days from bid date. It don't change very much, just.
Oh, on the thirty-day quote or whatever it was?
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, I don't say it, I can make up my mind.
I'm not gonna say it's too much, but I don't know, you know.
We'll still have another meeting before it expires. So it should be good.
So under sewer replacement? Hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. One sixty-one, six thirteen fifty-two. What were we gonna do last time? Talk to say on here, something like that? So I, I spoke to a commissioner on their ARPA funds. He said I can, we can, the council can bring it to the commissioner. But he said, I'll do it up front notice, you're wasting your time. Um, I know that the county commissioners are focused right now on using that funding, if they can, for childcare in Stafford and St. John. Helping out, fund that with them funds. So, he said your chances of getting it are probably none. Well, how are we gonna pay for the last one before we got those other funds? We had, we, that's what funds are left over. The hundred and sixty-one thou, so what we done last year, we actually had that money in our storm sewer, or sewer replacement fund. What we done last year, we paid for with our ARPA funds for the city. But we maybe went over. We went over because we spent the thirty-some thousand to have everything cambered, which come out of that same fund, so. So we were gonna deplete that fund, right? Cause then we already, we were already gonna do it before we got the funds, right? We were just gonna deplete it? Yes. It looked like, if I remember right, we put about thirty-five thousand a year in sewer replacement. What we transfer into that fund. And that sewer replacement, obviously. Yeah, cause storm sewer's separate and I think the water stuff's separate too. Well, I'd sure like to see some done, you know, I'm sure.
And, I mean, we have, like in the general fund, we have the capital improvement other, we have money in there. And then we do have the one percent sales tax, I mean, it's, that money's not untouchable, it's, you know.
It's used for infrastructure.
Right, and it, I mean, if this is something that we are really moving forward on and, and want to do it, should we take all of it out of it? I don't suggest that, but it's not untouchable and we could take some of it out of that.
So could you maybe get us together, like, replacement, like, would you help, comfortable taking out sewer replacement, one percent and?
Yeah, I can throw together some options and, yeah.
Cause I think, as long as we get, as long as this is working just the way we think it's going.
Right.
I'd like to continue doing some. Every year or something. So the two combines, two hundred and sixty-five thousand? Six forty-one, forty. That would be to do everything and minus that thirty-five hundred dollar mobilization fee.
How much is the one percent?
As of last month, it was three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, forty dollars and sixty-eight cents.
He wrote it down.
I looked it up on my phone for last meeting, cause it's not, not in this one, so that's as of last month. I thought about this three days ago when I looked it up.
Is that above and beyond the money that comes out of it for the road people?
Yes, yeah, I mean, we're.
You deduct the fifty thousand, is that what you're saying?
Well, we'll pay that in October.
Right, like, we're paid up, yeah, I mean.
Until October. So I mean, you're talking a hundred and four thousand if you pull it all out, if you pull the remainder out and drain the sewer replacement. Yeah. Yeah, if you get some numbers together, it works for next meeting, James. I would prefer not to take the sewer replacement order down this year.
Yeah, yeah, no, I was just gonna say that.
I mean, I, I would like to see, I'd like to at least see the thirty-five thousand we transfer every year stay there in case we have an emergency.
Right.
I mean, I know we've got other funds, but to have it specifically sitting there for an emergency and sewer replacement. Yeah.
I'd like to see some options.
Yep, I'll throw some stuff together and get it sent out for you.
Uh, Jason, one last question for you. You said that company that does inspections of ponds, they come out here and do that? For free? I don't know what the rest of council thinks, but I think it'd be a good idea, just have them come out here and take a look at it and give us an estimate.
I'm, I'm okay with an estimate, yeah. Get that, thank you.
Yeah.
What's that?
I said the free part scares me.
Yeah, well, they're just wanting the business like everybody else, I assume. And it, it just, it just bothers me, because now, it was getting, getting higher and higher. Just like the ammonia thing, I don't know why they think they have to do it, but they do it, they're gonna do it. Raise that one up too. And now, but the, but we cannot discharge out of those ponds until we, we get those numbers loaded. And that's telling me that's just the sludge buildup in it, because I don't know when's, I can't, I asked, nobody even knows when's the last time you did, back in the early, or early eighties, late seventies, I guess.
So you don't discharge out of there at all?
I, I, yes, it passes, it, it, I, yes, it did.
Okay, okay, alright.
So.
Any other questions for Jason? You wanna instruct him anything on the, the sewer truck? You wanna go and instruct him on getting the, the estimate on the sewer pond?
Yeah, no, just say, go ahead.
He doesn't need permission, it's not money.
What's that?
He can get you, you can get them a quote and bring it to the table, you don't need permission.
Oh, with the, yeah, I just throw them out there, that's what I liked, that was gonna, my plan was.
Any more questions?
Sorry I was so long, but I had to get out there.
Thanks, thanks for that, Jason, update, yes, yeah.
Police chief. You say you have any, nothing?
Nope.
Fire chief. City administrator Jamie.
I don't have anything right now.
Attorney John.
I don't have any.
Old business, I don't wanna talk about any of that stuff. Property code, truck parking, engine from power plant, bulk water project, swimming pool, sewer cleaning cameras, communication, new business. Nope, okay, how about a ten-minute executive session for a possible hire?
Ten minutes.
Um, table one, Stephanie, please.
I'm making motion for ten-minute executive session for. I'd make a motion for a ten-minute executive session for possible hire for the swimming pool, to the council, mayor, city clerk, attorney, and Stephanie Smith.
Second.
Got a motion on the table? We got a second? All in favor? All opposed. Passes five and zero.
Reconveni-
Or five and.
Five and.
Thank you, Jason.
Five is your vote.
Eight o'clock to reconven-
Eight o'clock to come back in. Bathroom executive session.
I would make a motion that we hire Allison Smith for assistant manager at the pool at eleven fifty an hour.
Second.
Got a motion and a second on the table? All in favor? All opposed. Passes five and oh.
I'd make a motion to hire senior guards Hunter Smith and Peyton Meyer, both at nine fifty an hour.
Second.
Got a motion and a second on the table? Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed. Five and oh.
I'd make a motion to hire Jade Fortilo, Mackenzie Hacker, and Paige Mansel as lifeguards at eight twenty-five an hour.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed. Passes five and oh.
And I'd make a motion to hire Ava Smith, part-time as a lifeguard at seven twenty-five an hour.
Second.
Got a motion? Mark second. Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed. Passes five and oh. I think that's. Now I'd entertain a motion for a five-minute to discuss employee performance. If somebody puts a motion.
Does that include?
Um, table.
Oh.
The what?
The pool screen.
Oh.
The windows?
Uh-huh.
No, I'm taking care of them. I don't need them to tell me how to do it.
Okay. Um, and I also just wanna make sure that we make sure we get the pool shade up this year. We had a lot of complaints last year that it wasn't up and there's no place for them to sit. So as long as we got that on there, then, and get the screen fixed. We are gonna have to come in and do quite a bit of cleaning because the screen that they didn't put in brought a lot of dirt and leaves and everything else in. So everything inside the guardhouse has to come out. Everything has to be hosed down. So a little more cleanup there this year than normal.
Can you talk to Jason and make sure that it's addressed, same like just the pool stuff? I mean, it's a, I know it's always a, you know, it's a rush to go, it's up two months.
And I, my guards are more than welcome to come in and help do whatever. So once, you know, school gets out, they're, they're more than welcome to help. So, okay?
As far as painting and stuff, if you can find them out, maybe Stephanie can help too.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yep.
What's it feel, like ten days before or more? Is it better to have more?
Well, I like the pool filled by May some-
Depends on who wakes.
First part of May, but, and I only do that because the temperature takes a while to get it warmed up, right?
Might just talk to Jason and try to-
Yeah, it's gonna be a little bit more planned out this year.
Make sure like May first.
Right. Pool should be done and ready to go by May first.
Right on.
Awesome.
If there's anything I can do, holler.
I will do that.
Okay. Alright, thank you guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jeff.
I apologize for getting ahead of the schedule there.
Who's that one include?
Table.
Table. I'd make a motion for a five-minute executive session to discuss employee performance to contain council, mayor, city clerk, and city attorney.
Second.
Motion and a second on the table? All in favor? All opposed. Passes five and oh for five minutes.
Eight and nine.
Eight and nine.
We can come back in.
We can come back in, break with council.
The hell did he write?
I would uh, make a motion to give Guff Williamson a two percent increase per his evaluation.
Second.
Got a motion and a second on the table? All in favor? All opposed. Passes five and zero. With that being said, I think that's the end of it. Unless you people got something else you wanna talk about, I'd entertain a motion.
Still no.
Second.
Motion on the table, second, all in favor? Meeting adjourned. Five and oh.